Excellent, alright, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our school committee meeting for the night of Thursday, October the 4th, 2018. First order of business is our minutes from our last meeting. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of September 20th.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, do I have any discussion? Questions, clarifications? I looked, I took a quick look at it, I thought it accurately, you know, reflected the meeting, some of the passionate involvement that we were experiencing, and alright, hearing no further discussion, all in favor? Motion passes 4-0, thank you. Chairperson's report, I would like to start, and I did this through our new social media feed last night, so if you follow the Maynard Public Schools, you might have seen the thank you that I put out last night. We hosted our second annual Parents Forum in this room last night, and the Parents Forum was a brainchild of Don Capello and some of the other committee members last year to get together with members of the community in a less formal setting than an open meeting. And I would say we probably had between 20 and 25 community members last night, four of the five committee members from the board where they're. Mary was in front of the CPC, so more on that later.
No, I wasn't last night.
No, not last night?
No.
Oh, okay, never mind. I was convinced you were in front of the CPC.
No, I said I would go, and yeah, anyway.
But we had a fantastic conversation, and, I mean, the whole theme of the night was, we as an organization are committed to, like, continuous improvement. And last night, we got some critical feedback, some constructive feedback, we got some compliments, and it was just a really good conversation across a wide variety of topics. We had some takeaways that we're gonna follow up on. Some of those things that we discussed last night, we will be touching on, on the agenda for our meeting in two weeks on the 18th. And I felt, I walked out of there tired, but feeling really good about the work and the conversations that we had last night. So I was really pleased with that. The second thing that I want to touch on during my chairperson's report tonight is, I want to publicly thank Aaron and Tim, our Department of Public Works Director and our Facilities Director, for the work that they've done managing and pushing extra staff into our Green Meadow Building since the beginning of September, when the concerns about air quality came to light. Aaron and Dr. Girardi are going to touch on it during our agenda item, but I am just so, so, so thankful for the work and the effort and the overtime hours that have gone in to making sure that we have a safe and healthy learning environment for our teachers and our students. So, thank you, Aaron, it's greatly, greatly appreciated. And finally, I believe that's it. So, Dr. Girardi, you ready for us with your superintendent's report?
Sure.
Excellent.
On our website and Facebook post, which people really, if you can get the app, it's awesome, the new Maynard Public Schools app, it will bring you right to the post, oops, I shouldn't have done that, sorry. But on our website and Facebook post, I just posted an update from the Maynard Music Association, and I plan on being a blackjack dealer at their Always Fun Casino Night, but they need more help, so if there's anybody out there who can help out that night, it would be greatly appreciated, and if you get a chance, go look at the website. I also posted another upcoming event, this is a second event in a series of Meet the Central Administrator coffees. It lasts, it's an opportunity for our school community to meet central office administrators in a comfortable setting, to get to know each other and learn each other's perspectives, much like the Forum. Last month, we held a Meet the Director of Technologies coffee, this month is the Meet the Director of Student Services coffee. And so, this event is scheduled for October 10th, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., and October 11th, from 3:00 to 4:00, just like we did the last one, so there's afternoon hours and morning hours to accommodate people. And it'll be in the Maynard Public Schools Central Office, which is located right off the Fowler foyer.
Awesome.
And so, also, yesterday, the principal screenings for Fowler, the committee sent me some very impressive candidates, and I'm actually interviewing the candidates tomorrow morning, I'm excited about that, and I'm hoping by early next week, we can find a candidate for the Fowler Principal of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. So I'm very excited that that's moving along, and I think the last time, the time of year was not good, you know, two weeks before school started, but this time, they got a significant number of applicants, a good pool, and I was watching the committee's emails back and forth about how they really appreciated the process. So everybody in the committee was very, very pleased with it. So I'm excited about that. Also, I attended, I attended the Middlesex Partnership for Youth Safety Summit and the NEAS Conference last week. Some of the highlights were, Chief Smith, who's the President of the Maynard Partnership for Youth, and he's also the Wakefield Chief of Police, he identified that during a crisis, there's a lot of misinformation, and so it's really important for us, especially on social media. And it's really important for us, whether it's a crisis or in general, to let people know that the best place to get accurate information is at the School Department website or through the School Department information venues, like our emails and those sort of things. And it's the same for the town, under a crisis, you know, if you want to know what the police are dealing with, the best way to find out is through their press releases or their information that they put out. And so, that was good information to learn, to guide people to the right sources, because sometimes, some sources are more speculative and not necessarily accurate. I also got to see Keith Jones, who's the Director of Security for Draper Labs in Cambridge, and he provided compelling information on proactive assessments and supports for staff's mental health, which, you know, has been a big issue, that I've been worried and wanting to make sure that we take care of our staff. And he had some very interesting stories about the Boston Marathon bombing, because Draper Labs is right in between where it happened and where the Sinai brothers were chased around for a day. And at one point, he had to lock down his building, much like we locked down, but he had to call his employees who hadn't made it to work yet and say, "Don't come, because we're in lockdown, just don't come to work today." And the employees that were there, he had to talk to the food service and say, "We might be here all night," and if you recall, it was an all-day and into-the-night event.
It was.
So we learned a lot about how to deal with those sort of crises, and it was a great conference. I also got to meet Dr. Rebecca Holcomb at the NEAS Conference, who's the former Vermont Secretary of Education, and she provided us with neurological evidence of ways to support, and the need to support, students in closing the achievement gaps, so that was really interesting information, I'm hoping to get her PowerPoint, so I can share some of that with you at some point. And then we also learned how to design and renovate schools to serve the needs of all students, so, through AIA Senior Project Manager, Greg Smalley. So, been learning a lot, and it's been an exciting couple of weeks, and I also wanted to just point out, Jennifer and I have been working on some curricular initiatives with the Maynard Anti-Racism Alliance, and Heather, Heather O'Brien and Maggie Wood are here tonight, just to visit and say hi. But they've been working with Jennifer and I, and so we're looking forward to those curricular improvements as well.
Awesome.
So, yeah, really exciting work, and they even provided an opportunity for some of our staff to go to PD with them, and we've already done that once, and there's more collaboration coming.
It's nice to put faces with your names, I'm part of the Mara Facebook page, and I read a lot of the things that both of you post, so thank you for the time and the effort that you put into bringing attention to the issues. So, thank you for joining us tonight. Let's move on, student repper's report, are you guys ready?
Yes.
Alright, Patrick, AJ, how you guys doing tonight?
Um, good, just give us a little special.
Hello?
Hello.
Um, alright, so I'll start off with saying Tyler's now available to students, we got the email, we have our accounts, I've logged in, and we're able to check our grades, and I think everyone's just trying to figure out how it works, but it's pretty, somewhat simple.
Okay.
But everybody's able to check their grades now, so that's not a major issue. Besides that, we, WAVM personally, we're about to have our raffle tomorrow, the drawing's gonna be live on TV, so we'll be announcing the winners there.
Okay.
Well, back to, going back to the Tyler system, it's been pretty mixed feedback, some people like it, some people don't like it, obviously change is annoying for everyone, so everyone has to relearn it. I've heard some teacher, like, frustrations, but I think, you know, beginnings are hard, so.
Yeah.
I personally like it better than I pass, I don't understand why everyone's complaining, but...
Because change is hard.
It's hard.
Like, I remember when my district switched to a new student information management system a few years ago, and change is hard.
Yeah.
You can't find anything, everything takes you longer, and when you have, like, this much time to get something done.
That's right.
Like, I feel it, so I'm hopeful that the transition, like, eases over time, I'm glad you like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, carry on, sorry.
Personally, I, I was more of just a fan of IPass, I just like being able to click and then scroll down to check on my grades, this one you kinda have to tap a few times, it's not, it's not complicated, again, I think the teachers have had more of a problem with it than the students so far.
They probably have to do more with it, too.
Yeah.
That's probably part of the issue.
I mean, you're checking, what, like, grades and attendance, right?
I think he's right, there's a lot of clicking.
Yeah.
Okay.
There is a lot of clicking.
But besides that, WAVM, we're about to go kicking in gear for the telethon.
Yep.
So that's gonna be on our minds for, like, the next two months until it actually happens. We're just making final preps, our hosts and tech crew are gonna be selected, and then we're going full training for that. Besides that, a lot of people in my grade are, like, really just starting to cram down on college applications right now, especially for people like me, I have to do early action, so a lot of it's due by November 1st.
Yes.
So I have to crack down on that a lot this month, and next month as well.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Here in Maynard, do you guys use the Common App?
Yes.
That's, that's beefy, that's a lot of work.
It's beefy, it's very organized, I'll say that, like, all of your information just goes right into there. All of my schools personally are on the Common App, I know, like, one of my friends, she has one of her schools that's not on the Common App.
Ooh, okay.
So that actually makes it just a little hard, because you gotta do two separate things.
Right.
But overall, I think if you're, a lot of your, like, I got lucky, all of the schools I wanted are on the Common App. So I'm able to just click right on and go right to it. But besides that...
Yeah, the hard part is the early action is coming up quick, and especially for getting scholarships, a lot of them tie it to early action, so...
Yeah, a lot of them tie for any, like, merit scholarships you want, you have to apply for early action. But, yeah, I still, like, November 1st is, like, for the top schools, and some, for some of my other picks, it's also December 1st as well. So I do have time, obviously, I'm gonna, like, try not to cram this all in at the last second.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
We had a student government meeting this morning, and I had requested to put a student concern section on the agenda, and we didn't get through the entire agenda this morning, so I'm kinda empty-handed, but hopefully, we have student government meetings every Thursday, every other Thursday morning, so it lines up perfectly with school committee meetings.
Okay.
So I should, from now on, should have a student concern section on the student government meeting agenda, so I can relay other people's concerns, but of course, I'm trying just as hard to develop my own concerns.
Sure, of course.
But just so you know, I should, and if you have any, like, questions, you want feedback, I can ask them at the meeting, there's roughly, like, 30 of us, so you can get from all grades, all pools of people, so if you have any, you want feedback, I will gladly put out a poll.
Okay, thank you. Two weeks ago, you brought to our attention that our new food service vendor was using styrofoam trays in the cafeterias, what's the update on that, are we still at styrofoam trays?
Yes.
Yeah, we are.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a...
Parent.
Parents.
Parent concern, but yeah, it's still styrofoam.
Sorry, the meeting's kinda blending.
Yeah.
After a while.
Yeah.
But you guys are also, like, first person, like, in the cafeteria every day, so that's still a thing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we're working on that?
Yeah, I know Michelle was gonna look at it, I think that they are recyclable.
Recyclable styrofoam?
Yeah, I think so, but I don't know for a fact, I know somebody's noticed the recyclable symbol on it, the question is, are they recycling?
Are they actively being recycled?
I don't, I don't think so, so I know Michelle was gonna look into it for me.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's 2018, I'm not really cool with the idea of styrofoam in the cafeteria.
Question, weren't they always styrofoam? I, again, I bring lunch from home, so I may be completely wrong about this, but I always saw just styrofoam trays.
Yeah, there's no difference from what we had with a different vendor, because I think that was a question, did we, and, no, it's the same, exact products, because most of the vendors use all the same exact stuff, unless you ask them for something different.
Under our old vendor, who we also use in my, my district, they did switch to, like, a compressed paper.
Paper, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it seems like it's an option.
I'm sure we can ask for it, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's a good conversation to have, I mean, we do so much as a community with our, you know, our environmental awareness and our recycling and all of the initiatives here in town, that I, I just, I think that, you know, we could do better than styrofoam trays in cafeterias, so...
Or at least if we've got them to have actual, absolutely recycled.
Have them recycled, yeah.
That we can do that. On that topic, I, while we're talking about the food service, I'm still not hearing great things about the food service.
Really?
More so at the middle school than at the high school, but the healthy food choices are behind, like, the ice cream that, you know, is like the first thing that the kids see, so they're all grabbing that instead of maybe healthier choices.
Okay.
So, even those healthy choices, I guess, aren't so great right at this moment, so, I don't know if they're still tweaking it or that, but...
We can look into it.
Yeah.
Anything else for us?
I'll say that the football game this Friday, it was about the same turnout as the opening weekend, so it was pretty good. I will say, the band did play this time.
Yes.
They played on the track sideline.
Yep.
I just think it's still, obviously, it would've been better to have the bleachers, again, I think that's, like, we're just trying to find out when that's going to happen. I'm not exactly sure, I know something about, the inspector was out of town that week, and he's gotta make sure, has a grandfathered in yet, or do we really need to replace them? So I think that's gonna be a little bit of concern, also for, speaking from our bands'.
Yeah, from the, from the band's perspective, it was pretty reluctant, we weren't, weren't too happy, it was kind of like, a little, a little disheartening, because you're like, you're sitting there and there's nothing behind you, so you know the sound is just kinda, like, dwindling, and you're like, I wonder if anyone can hear us right now, so it was kind of saddening from a band perspective, but of course, we understand, and we do what we have to do, so we play.
Okay. I, I personally was kinda just sitting with the band, and it did seem very, like, I was sitting in the band section for a little bit until I got kicked out. And it did seem like it was a little bit disconnected from the game, I, like, looked over and I'm like, "Oh, they scored a touchdown, oh wow," because I was talking with one of my friends from the band. So it was a little separated, I will say that, again, obviously, like Pat said, it, they understand, like, it's obviously not gonna, we can't do anything until the bleachers are approved or whatnot.
Yeah.
But that's about the only difference from last weekend. I will say that with the whole thing, I know we brought up last weekend about the telethon and the parade falling on the same day.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that.
So, I actually talked with my dad about it, and he didn't seem to have any knowledge of it, so, yeah, he actually agreed with, like, the fact that it shouldn't be on the same day. I think he said the reason for it was that December 1st, people would've thought it would've been too early, because people are just coming back from Thanksgiving break, so nobody would've known about it. And it just so happened that Greg Hill's, what's it called, jingle?
Jingle, the 5th, yeah.
Yeah, fell on the same time, so that just was kind of a convenience. But again, we'll see what happens, we're just not sure what real, we're really gonna be able to do. I mean, it looks like it's just, a lot of the students have, a lot of the students, again, have to be at the telethon.
Two places, yeah.
Because they're hosts in tech crew, so it's gonna look weird if, like, one of them is missing or whatnot.
Of course, yeah.
Right, I was just looking, Thanksgiving is actually the 22nd, so that doesn't fall into that weekend, that is, that's a bad...
You're right, because the 23rd would be Friday, it's that week.
Take note, everybody.
Fourth Thursday, so 22nd, so there's a whole week, so they're not coming back.
I think it might've been also the fact that it was just December 1st, people might've been, like...
Last year it was December 2nd.
Yeah.
There we go.
I, I, I won't speak exactly, that's the reason I heard, but that might not be the reason they had. Obviously, it's a little bit of a, again, like, disappointment from the student body, just because we don't know what to do now, because it's, kinda puts us just between a rock and a hard place, well, it's like, we can do it, but it's not gonna, we're gonna have to take so much resources that it might not be, like, plausible. But we'll see what happens, who knows, something might get changed, but I don't think it's going to, I think we're just gonna have to tough it out, like, stuff happens, oh well. But that's about it, from us, I guess, on this pad, is anything we bring up? Yeah, again, the school year, not everything has completely kicked in, like, next week, I'm sure we'll bring you stuff from the telethon, or not next week, two weeks from now, telethon will start to kick off. Sports are gonna be coming to playoff season, so that's gonna be a little bit of big, and National Honor Society right now is in the process of putting on homecoming. We just have to decide on the final date, and we're gonna go into planning for that.
And just for the sake of the people watching this on WAVM feed on YouTube after this, the induction night is the 30th, I believe?
The NHS induction is...
I know we all got invited, so...
Yeah, it's on October 30th. I do not know the exact time, I believe it starts at 7:00?
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken.
I think that the email that we got...
Yeah, that's ringing a bell, we got, we got a missed email invitation.
I think it's at 7:00, because I remember something might be there at 6:30, so, I'll be speaking there that night, obviously, but we'll have a few speakers, it's, it's a good night, I'll say that, it's a little bit, it's very...
7:00 p.m.
7:00 p.m., okay. It's very formalized, I'll say that, at the very least, like, there's, like, exact scripts we're supposed to follow.
Who do you have for speaker this year?
For our keynote speaker, I actually talked with her this morning, it's Brenda Sullivan.
Okay.
So she's going to speak on RBF, hopefully, as long as you said, if they, if Phil Tocchi makes playoffs, that they won't have a game that day, but she said if that's the case, she might have to just give, give us her speech and somebody's gonna have to read it. But usually, they're back by 7:00 anyway, even if it's away, as long as it's not, like, in Oxbridge or something like that.
Sure.
Can one of you WAVM people record her, and then she could just be a video, she needs to be, just saying. That may be more trouble than it's worth.
Not a bad idea.
But I think that's about it, so, yeah, induction ceremony's the 30th, at 7:00 p.m.
Perfect.
Can I ask when you decide on the homecoming date?
We're deciding on the homecoming date, that's gonna be decided on Tuesday, that's our next meeting for officers. It's either going to fall on the 16th or the 30th, I actually talked with one of my friends who's on the football team to ask him about playoffs, because that was the one thing we just have to watch out for, is just make sure it doesn't fall on the same day as a football game.
It sounds like the 30th could be a potential conflict, though, if you have any National Honor Society induction also, right?
November 30th.
Oh, November.
November 30th, sorry, 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 no, I should've made that more clear.
Okay.
We do it because we have all the new members, that's usually their first event.
Okay.
Of the year, to help set up and break down and all that. That's gonna be on the November, either November 16th or November 30th, we just have to figure out, with playoffs going on, what's gonna be the better date. We would like to do it on the 16th, just because we feel like that's the better date anyway, because we feel like we're cutting too close to the telethon, 30th, but also, the 30th might be the, just a safer date, just because playoffs usually fall on Saturday, but we'll see, we'll get a definite, I'll, I can have a definite date for you back, next school committee meeting, because we have to set by then.
Sounds good.
Great.
Other questions from the board? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Sorry? Yeah, don't, don't worry about it, Patrick, it's cool. Well, just next time. Let's talk about Green Meadow air quality update, please.
So, Aaron and I worked on a series, a timeline, just so people could understand how everything unfolded and what's been happening along the way, and kinda give everybody an update, I know I've sent out quite a few emails and posts, but this all started back on September 6th, when we had a concern raised by a staff member, and since then, we've had a couple of other staff members who have raised their concerns about the health of the air quality. Right away, the school administration and facilities department began to discuss and investigate the situation, try to determine what the next steps were. By, within three days, by the 9th, the school administration provided communication to the community of the possible mold concern that was brought to our attention, and stated that we would be doing testing. The public works director at the same time contacted the local health agent, and they referred him to the Department of Public Health to schedule an indoor air quality inspection. The facilities department completed a visual walkthrough of the building to look for signs of active mold growth, and none were found. On the 12th, the DPH completed an indoor air quality inspection of the Green Meadow School, the Department of Public Health inspector met with the school administration and the staff member who had originally brought the mold concern. The DPH stated that there was not a public health risk related to mold, sorry about that. No active mold growth was found, verbal communications were provided to the school and facility staff, verbal recommendations included replacement of specific ceiling tiles, including one with a dark stain that was located in a closet or like a back office, a small office. The DPH also, Department of Public Health, when I say DPH, by the way, also recommended against performing airborne mold spore testing, as there really is no standard permissible levels of mold spores, because they're everywhere, that the way she described it to me and Aaron was, they're on your, you know, they're on your shoulder, they're floating around outside, mold is everywhere. However, because we had a health concern, and out of an abundance of caution, she said, "Well, you know, then you could consider doing it, if you really want to, Dr. Girardi." So I felt, for our staff's sake and our students' sake, that I think I should continue. And so, they also told us that the written report would be available in two to four weeks, as it turned out, it was done much quicker, but that's what we were told, and that was what happened in the past in 2011, it took a while for them to get it to us. So then, on September 14th, we still decided to go with that next step, and so, thanks to Aaron and the Department of Public Works, they scheduled the ASAP Environmental Company to actually test for the mold spores, inside the building, outside the building. On the 17th, ASP Environmental completed their testing for mold spores, and I sent that out, you'll remember, I sent a picture of the actual unit that was sucking the air up and testing for mold spores.
Yes.
As part of my report on that, on that news post. On the 18th, they were very quick, ASAP really means ASAP. Within a day, they provided us with the results of the airborne mold spore testing, which indicated similar levels of mold were found inside the building as outside. Also, the same types of mold found inside the building were also found outside the building, and they actually distinguished, some molds only grow outside, some grow outside and inside, and so that's where they gave us some, you know, these are outside and inside mold, so you might want to check and do a little cleaning in this room or that room, that's the kind of advice they gave us. But there was no shocking evidence, and they, in the email, they wrote to Aaron, it said there was no evidence of toxic molds detected, so this is the second report where they're saying, "There's no mold problem."
Okay.
On the 19th, I also sent out another thing on the Facebook explaining all the updates, just because we're really trying to communicate as a school committee and a school administration. On the 20th, we had the question and answer opportunity at the last school committee meeting, So that was where Aaron was nice enough to come, and he's here tonight to answer any questions. On the 21st, the DPH emailed their written report to Aaron and informed the town that hard copies were also mailed. And I know both Aaron and the principal didn't receive those hard copies until September 25th, because they snail mailed them, but I guess there was some community concern that maybe they could get them earlier. And so, since they were emailing the community, you know, I saw the email where they said, "Well, since the community's asking for this now," in the email, "rather than just wait, have you wait till the 25th, we'll email it to you too." So that's how that happened, but at least we got it then. Then on the 27th, I sent another informational out on Facebook to make sure that everybody knew whatever the latest goings-on were as far as what recommendations were being implemented, how quickly they were being implemented, because Aaron's staff really was working overtime, literally overtime, to get a lot of this work done as fast as possible. So, you know, when Aaron and I reviewed the facts, the facts that they provided us was, the Department of Public Health indicated there was not a public health hazard in both of their inspections in 2011 and in 2018. And since 2011, a lot of things were implemented, like eliminating all the rugs. For those of us who remember, there was rugs in that whole building. Rugs tend to trap dust and things that get in the air besides mold, because, you know, air quality involves things other than mold. But we've done a lot of things to improve that. Also, what I think is interesting is, if you actually look at the tests from 2011, we actually had improved scores, and I think that's because the UNIVETE systems after 2011, the facilities department has been making sure to replace all the filters three times a year, and they keep track of it. So we actually saw some improvements from 2011, the two different reports. The consultant who completed the airborne mold spore testing, you know, he stated in his email, "There's no evidence of black mold," and he just gave us recommendations that we started implementing.
Perfect.
The number of mold spores found outside was similar to that found inside or less, for the most part. There was one room that was slightly above and one room, or one area, the whole foyer, which has a lot of people coming in and out, which drags the mold in and out. And there was a room that had a giant industrial fan right in front of it and windows open, so it was sucking, creating a vacuum. So right away, we eliminated the use of that fan, even though it was blowing wind down the corridor, which makes you more comfortable. It was sucking in the mold, so that was the recommendation there. And so, and the DPH and the environmental consultant provide the recommended maintenance activities and operational best practices for improving air indoor quality, which we've been working on ever since.
Yep.
Continuing activities. We've had ongoing communication regarding this matter. And again, the school committee is nice enough to discuss this topic now twice, so we appreciate that. The town and school have reviewed, and are working to complete all of the recommendations and some of the updates as of today, because I, you know, I was posting a lot of the updates. Ceiling tiles have been replaced throughout the building, replaced stained tiles in Room 1E, 2E, 4E, 5E, closet areas, pre-K kindergarten hallway, installing missing ones in 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, 7E, 7F, and 7G. So that's a lot of ceiling tiles. The plumbing has been inspected. I had reported that we had brought in a plumber last Friday. All the exhaust fans have been inspected, and the 7C and B units were repaired, so that I had reported that they were working on it, but those are now repaired, as of, I think, yesterday or today. All in working order. The UNIVETE's have been inspected. Unit in 7K, the shaft motor coupler failed. That part was ordered. All other UNIVETE's are in good working order. Filters changed last summer, 2018. Next scheduled filter change will be December break of 2018. And building inspection, two active building inspected for active roof leaks. Roof leaks reported, observed in Room 3C. Roofing contractor was notified. In the past, $27,000 was spent on roof patching and repairs that were completed in 2018 and 2017, just so, you know, people are aware of the history, too, of what we've been doing. And that's driven when, you know, staff tell the principal or the custodians, and they identify there's a new leak, then we go up and we start looking for where the leaks come from. Also, the areas that had the higher counts, the four areas that they identified as having higher counts of mold spores indoors, those were auto scrubbed and cleaned with a bleach solution. And then, ongoing cleaning and dusting of the fan units has been taking place, because they sent us some pictures of fans that were dusty, so that has to be taken care of. And then, there's still some concerns, because some of the buildings sold, it has these little 12 by 12 tiles, not like these big ceiling tiles like we have up here.
And those are the ones that are tongue in groove and like locked together.
Right, and so those have been tough. What I think we've done now is just put stuff in place, but it doesn't look great. So Aaron talked to me about his work on possibly getting some electrical upgrades that might include a regular hung ceiling, and then we can hopefully have a better ceiling system. And Aaron's always really good about working on getting grants to do a lot of this work, and he's really creative in that way. So he's hoping that will be a step in the future to help improve this problem as well. And in addition to that, every room, when we got rid of all the rugs, every room still had a throw rug, and we make sure, Chief Stowers always makes sure that we have to have fire rated, safety. But the thing that we're thinking of using is some stackable, like pillows, instead of a rug, because rugs still tend to trap particles, right? Dirt. It's hard, you could vacuum them. We actually have heap of vacuum cleaners that are vacuumed with, but they're rugs. So we're gonna pilot a couple of rooms. We're gonna get some pillows that are stackable, so that the kids, they're like pillows, or I don't know if they're like those sports seats. We haven't quite figured out the exact model. But we're trying something different, and if the teachers like them, then we'll be converting from rugs to these pillow or those like, those seats that you sit on, on the bleachers, those type of seats, those foam ones. I'm not sure which model we're getting. But that's a way to get something that's gonna be cleaner, not need the repeated cleaning that the rugs do, and help to eliminate other air quality potential issues. So, you know, the conclusions at this point are that there really isn't a mold problem. We're still working on what we can do to improve cleaning, or to provide these new resources that'll make it easier, so there's less cleaning necessary. And we're gonna continue to recommend all those best practices, you know, like I said, some of them from 2011 actually improved air quality in, when you look at the statistics from 2011 to 2018. So that's the summary that Aaron and I put together, but if you have any other questions, Aaron was nice enough to come and answer questions for anybody.
So Aaron, I'll kick it off. I read the same report you did. The list of recommendations were both specific and relatively general when it comes to best practices, and there were also some recommendations for the future. Like, is it fair to say that you and Tim and your team have like made either progress or achieved all of those at this point?
Yeah, absolutely. I think the-
Thank you.
Absolutely. Aaron McClosco, Director of Public Works, Town of Maynard. I do. I think that we haven't hit all of them. Obviously, some of them are more program-based and recommendations, but we prioritize them, and based on the recommendations from the Department of Public Health, as well as the consultant, you know, we tackled the low-hanging fruit, ceiling tiles, the carpets, the rugs, cleaning the areas. Tried to remove any signs of possible mold growth areas that could contribute to any mold growth. You know, I think there's longer-term solutions, and we look at, you know, do we have adequate staffing? Do we spend enough hours in the building, man-hours in the building, based on square footage of the building? Are there other things that we could be doing? I think it's an ongoing discussion that we have to have with teachers. You know, some of the recommendations weren't necessarily facilities-based, but more operational, like clutter in the rooms, or, you know, just stuff that makes it difficult to clean the rooms, or stuff that might be blocking the UNIVETE's. And then, just best practices. Some of the things were like, close windows, let the UNIVETE system work and operate as designed. So I think it's a team effort between facilities and, you know, the staff that are in the building. Continued discussion. You know, there's some roof leaks. There's an active one that we were notified on. We notified the contractor, so we'll try to get out here as soon as possible to get that repaired. But, you know, we're confident there's not a mold issue in this building. And, you know, it's an older building. It's in need of, you know, maintenance. It's in need of upgrades and renovations and repairs. You know, I've said that for a couple of years now. We've applied for MSBA Core Program Grant to replace the building. And that was accepted to the next round. We did the feasibility study with MSBA in that building the same week that we had this mold issue that came up, the concern that came up. So, you know, we're making steps towards, you know, a renovation replacement, the next step. We've identified that there's a need, and just kind of work together to get to that next level.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say it's an uphill climb at this point, just because of the three different ages of the different sections of the building, and the fact that we have a flat roof on a building in New England. Like, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we just built the building, you know, the new high school has a flat roof, too.
I know, I know.
It's how they build them, and it is what it is, and, you know. We try to do the best we can to address the concerns as they come up, and, you know, we're far from perfect. I'll be the first to admit that. But we try to be proactive, you know, address concerns. If we can't get them right away, don't answer, we follow up. And, you know, happy to, you know, receive any feedback anytime from the staff that are in the building, the teachers, parents, you know, any recommendations they have, open all ears, so.
Other questions from members of the board?
Again, thank you. I really feel like you've gone above and beyond through this entire process. You've been responding to our emails, citizen emails, meeting with concerned citizens. I just, I can't say thank you enough to you and Tim and your team, and all of the extra time, effort, and energy that you've put in.
Yeah, I just want to say, I know it's like, this is, so Aaron is on the town side and bringing in extra town resources. So this is part of the, everyone working together for the community to do what we need to do to try to get things done that need to be done. One of the things that came up, for people that may not be aware, is that we cut back some of the custodians in the buildings for the schools-
Two budget cycles ago.
Two budget cycles ago, because of budget cuts, and had conversations with Aaron around that. And that's one of the things he's referring to, is for the square footage of the buildings to have enough people to be able to do the best practice level. So, in any case, I appreciate the thoughtful way of going through to try to make sure that we're doing everything we can so that we are preventing any potential issues. And it's clear that there was no health issue of black mold, but that people were still concerned about making sure that the air quality was as optimal as we can make it be, with old buildings. Old, older, oldest.
Exactly.
Yeah. How much time, just to understand, how much time has ended up going into this? Do you have a sense of that, like person?
Quite a few hours. I know there's multiple meetings, you know, on administrative level, on the staff level. You know, I can't say enough to thank the crew within the DPW, within the facilities group, the custodians in the buildings. You know, they went above and beyond, put in the extra hours. I can get you a run-on list, and have to look at time sheets, but, you know, the week that it happened, we had people in there after hours that night. I had guys coming in at 3 o'clock in the morning, cleaning rooms.
Yeah, yeah.
The guys put in the extra effort.
Yeah, the level of responsiveness and kind of the quick pace of trying to take care of it, I really appreciate that. That's, and I guess I've worked with, we've worked with Aaron before on different, on a bunch of different things. So anyone that hasn't necessarily been introduced to Aaron yet, I guess that, there's a lot of trust. He just consistently goes above and beyond to make sure that things are taken care of. So I feel very confident in his telling us that things are being taken care of, and we really appreciate that.
So if there's no further questions from the board, I do want to open it up. We have citizens' comments next, so I think we'll just naturally transition into that. While Aaron's here, oh, so let's take it a little bit out of order. Let's pause for a moment. Let's move on from the Green Meadow air quality update. We are going to table the school committee goals conversation for the evening. Unfortunately, there was some reporting errors when it came to prioritizing. Our board member who sort of championed the plan tonight is not with us. So in the interest of doing right by it, and having the full voice and the complete numerical accuracy, we're just gonna table it, and we'll come back to it in two weeks on the 18th, so that we can do right by it.
So just to be clear, we did have it. Dawn sent it, and we realized that not everyone had ranked. Like, the one to five rating went in opposite directions for some people, which we got it this afternoon, because she's also been dealing with the parent form, and so amongst all those things, it was, there wasn't enough lead time to fix the goal issue-
And further to look at it.
-to then have that conversation tonight. So that's why we would, and Dawn was unexpectedly not here as well.
Yeah.
So, in any case, we apologize for that.
So I'm jumping ahead in it, but, so I think in the interest, I'm gonna make a motion that we table school committee goals, and we come back to it for the agenda on the 18th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made. Second, and any further commentary on it? All in favor? All right, thank you. So now, citizens' comments, and what's on the minds of the folks in the audience tonight? Yeah, hi.
Can we ask questions that don't pertain to what's on the agenda?
Yeah, so the way that that works is you can absolutely bring up something, but we can't really deliberate or do too much with your questions. But if it's something of note, of import, and it's something that we want to follow up on, what we can do is agree to put it on a future agenda. So absolutely, if you'd like to come up and just introduce yourself, talk into the mic so that the people who watch it on the tape delay can hear you. And what's on your mind?
Lydia Clancy. I have a daughter-in-forth here at Fowler. So I'm curious about the two principal model, and I know that it was addressed last night. I heard from various people that it was addressed last night. And that basically, the decision to go forward with it was based on feedback. But to my knowledge, there aren't any like identifiable metrics or anything that were used in order to make this decision. So I'm wondering what the feedback was, and if there's anything that's been documented to show that this actually is a better model for us. Because I know that there are some parents who are concerned about the fiscal responsibility of having two principals in each building. And the whole point, when we originally got rid of one of the vice principals, or actually, both of them, and then split Donna between the two, was because we had budget cuts. And now, not only have we hired these people back, but we've hired them back at, I assume, higher salaries. And if that's not the case, then you should let people know that, because everyone's assuming that they're all getting paid principal salaries.
So thank you for bringing that to the attention of the community. We absolutely talked about it last night. I think we did what we could in the moment, in that informal setting, to alleviate some of the concerns. But now, hearing that this is again, sort of percolating in the community, I think it's more than reasonable to revisit it. I know that Dr. Girardi and the leadership team have done a lot of work around the job descriptions for what the different building-level administrators are doing. So Bob, do you think it would be reasonable to revisit this as an agenda item, just to further inform the community on job requirements? The, I think the term you used was fiscal responsibility, and just also, what metrics are we using? Because there were some very thoughtful questions last night, and I think right now, we're leaning more on the informal feedback. And some of the feedback we got from members that were in attendance last night was, could we survey? Or, you know, some sort of rating systems, or there was some really excellent conversation that indicated that we need to do more. So thank you for bringing it up, and I think we'll try and get it on an agenda very soon.
And then, in addition to, what is, where are we in the finding a Fowler principal?
Oh, yeah. Dr. Girardi, during his superintendent's report, indicated that we're down to two finalists, and he's interviewing them tomorrow.
I missed that, sorry.
No, no, no worries. I only know that because I ran into Dr. Girardi early. He's, one of the clients is an active principal right now, and he's interviewing them at 7 o'clock tomorrow morning. So that principal can then get to their current building, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
No, thank you. It's on a swivel. You can pull it down. There we go.
I'm Danielle Pimenta.
I'm Jessica O'Toole.
Hi, ladies.
We are here tonight to talk a little bit about dyslexia and a great proposal we received that we think will be really, really great and fit with the mission that you have highlighted for us in regards to the use of technology and serving all students in the Maynard Public Schools.
Okay.
We're trying to decide what to say. So let me start with why we're here to talk about dyslexia. The dyslexia bill was passed this afternoon in the House.
That's terrific news.
Yes.
I know there was some consternation a couple of weeks ago that the elected representatives refused to act on it, so.
Yes.
That sounds like an update, then, that they actually revisited it.
Yes, it is an update, yeah. They passed it during informal session, which-
Oh, cool.
-is so hard to pass anything during an informal session, but they did pass it. And it was passed in the Senate over the summer, so this is it. So very soon, we're gonna be seeing that becoming law. And what that bill and future law does is to, number one, identify and really use the real definition for dyslexia, which is a neurobiological condition. Kids are born with it. You don't really, it's not because parents are not reading at home, it's not because we have poor teachers. It's kids are literally born with it. Their brains are wired in a certain way that makes reading difficult. However, with the right intervention, kids are successful, become very successful readers. And the second part of the bill is a screening, universal screening of kids. So we already do screening when the kids are coming into kindergarten, so it's an additional piece to the screening we already have. And screenings have been proven effective. I identified kids who are at risk to have future struggles with reading. When we look at reading intervention, the best time to give any kind of intervention is between K and second grade, third grade. And the problem right now in Massachusetts is that we don't have a law that says we have to screen children, so we're not screening for dyslexia. And really, when we hit third grade, we see that child really, really struggling, and that's when we start throwing money at it, right? We try different interventions, we don't know what it is. And eventually, the kids will get into special education at an age where it's not optimal for that intervention. It still works, but it takes much longer and through a lot of socio-emotional challenges. So bottom line is, screening is coming to us, to our schools in Massachusetts. And it just so happened, we received this really wonderful proposal from Boston Children's Hospital and Harvard. I reached out to Nadine Gab, Dr. Hospital and Harvard. I reached out to Nadine Gabb, Dr. Gabb, who is one of the leader researchers for dyslexia screening in Massachusetts. And I was just asking for help, some guidance. And she's like, how about we partner with Maynard? And I'm like, what does that mean? So what she sent to me was that they would like to partner with us, okay? Let me read so I don't make a mistake here. They want to partner, they would screen our children and three times, three times a year. So it's screening and monitoring the progress, right? And the data would come to us, of course. So, let me see. Yes, so testing will take place at three time points throughout the academic year. The schools that choose to participate will be given the opportunity for a host of professional development lectures by Dr. Gabb.
Sweet.
And/or Brain Awareness Day, in which the research team comes to the school to teach children about their brain.
That's cool.
And schools also receive a stipend for participation.
Okay.
So this falls completely in line with our mission. It falls completely in line in what we're going to eventually have to be doing very soon because of state law. In addition to that, I know that Carol Gehan has already been looking at screening, screening tools, and she's trying to figure out how to do it and how to put it in practice. So now we have the opportunity of these researchers, who are really the people putting together this screening tool, to come here and do it with us and teach us how to do it and give us the knowledge that, that they have, so we can implement this and help our children.
Sounds fantastic.
Great opportunity.
So what do you need from us?
That's the question we had.
So at this.
We have some information.
Yes, please.
But I think that they're rolling. So I think, right now, we need to give, we need to contact them and kind of like establish a liaison to the Gabb Lab, so that they can partner with us.
That's really what is called the Gabb Lab?
Yes, her last name is Gabb.
But it's so alliterative, it just like rolls off the tongue.
Right, it's perfect.
Yeah, so what I'll do is, I'll give Carol this information, and she'll contact you and you can make a connection.
Sounds like tomorrow.
Yeah, so, yeah. You'll be, as soon as we can.
Can you email Carol this? Do you have this an email?
I do have the digital copy of that.
Danielle, I know, I know you and CPAC are doing such amazing work in this area right now.
Thank you.
And I'm really impressed and really thankful. So I would love for you to get in touch with Carol, and if you can arrange the introductions, you seem to be intimately familiar with the process. If you can help us navigate that, that would be fantastic.
I'm happy to do whatever is necessary.
It's an amazing resource.
Yeah, the only thing I do want to, I do want to make sure that as we're navigating this process, that we're looping in the proper people, that we're really educating the teachers and all of that process. So that, as a teacher, and I'm sure you're well aware, we're always hypersensitive to new things that are being asked of us. And I just want to make sure that we're doing it properly, so that it's actually a resource and not an extra burden. That's, that's my only real concern, is trying to.
I love the fact that it's digital, so that way hopefully it makes it easier, not harder.
So let me add to the, to the research that they're doing right now. So we do have screeners that are paper and pencil, right? So what they're doing now is creating an app. So it's almost, the kid gets to kind of do it him or herself, and the app can also be used to check progress monitoring. So you'll make it faster and easier for teachers and children.
Okay.
Very interesting, so.
I would also like to see, like, maybe as this comes more together, this could be something we could present actually at a school committee for the community to know about, to recognize. I mean, it's not just, I have a friend in Arlington whose son is in second grade and just got recognized. She had to have an independent screening done in order to be able to have, because they just, you know, I, we're not alone in Maynard. And so it's awesome to have this happening for Massachusetts and for kids.
Yeah, we also have the program that we've started this year, right? The fourth to sixth grade, that ties into it.
The key is early screening.
Early screening.
Early screening, early intervention.
I want to make sure that you're being heard.
How early do they start, do they do the screening? Do they do it when they come out as a kindergarten, that they'll start screening the kids?
So you can actually screen kids when they're three years old. So you can, kids don't have to know how to read in order to be identified. So you can screen, and they do screen kids who are three and four. So if we're interested in looping in the preschool, that's another, another way to do it, too.
I'm sure that'd be interesting. That's part of why they'd like to partner with us, because we have that available, right? That's good.
We do have a small preschool cohort, yeah.
And question for us, would it be helpful if we took a vote or sent a letter or something to say that we're?
I'd like Danielle and Carol to work on it together, I think, to start. And then we can, we can report back to you.
That sounds fantastic.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Just so that they know that there is support from, on the surface.
Yeah, Colleen, can you reflect in the notes, maybe, that we would like to have an agenda item somewhere in November, or maybe early December, to make sure that we were, we were able to get involved in this and maybe get a quick update on that? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm looking at an email that you and Carol sent by tomorrow, hopefully the two of you will be talking, and we can get going by.
Yes, thank you. And just following back on the teacher thing, yes, being a teacher myself, we don't like a lot of top-down situations, especially when there's extra work for us. So I do understand, I'm sensitive to that, too. So I know we have teachers here.
Yeah.
So I'm just kind of like.
I saw the applause.
You seem to be excited about this.
Can we work together and make sure that we have teachers together? Is that okay with Dr. Girardi? Can, can they be part of that email? And then it'll be truly collaboration?
I just think that any initiative's more successful if you get the buy-in from, and I hate the term, but from the rank and file, you know?
Yeah. Well, but if they're, for us to start from the beginning, then I can have any feedback along the way that's going to help make it actually work, once you're, so that's not like 10 steps down the way, and then you're like, oh, we didn't think of this. And then once you're doing it, it doesn't actually work.
As teachers, we have been waiting on this.
You see it, yeah.
We see it, we know it exists, it's just we don't know what to do or how to diagnose it. And we don't have the ability to diagnose it. So it's, and you know it exists, we do know it exists.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you and Carol Gehan on this.
Yeah, Danielle, Jessica, thank you so much.
Thank you both very much.
Yeah, I'm wicked excited about that. Yeah?
I just want to say, the new WAVM pens have come in.
Oh, very cool.
And they're available in the station to whoever wants them. And we brought some here for the school committee.
Oh, thank you.
Feel very special.
I leave pens everywhere like breadcrumbs, so I'm always excited to get a new pen.
I love a good pen. Like, if you ever get a good pen, I'm just, yeah, a good pen. Very nice. And if you want to take a look.
Other citizens' comments, questions, suggestions for future agenda items? I know we got a lot last night at the parent forum, so.
Hi, again, Lydia.
Hi, Lydia.
So there was some discussion about, and this, I think, has to do with possibly helping kids with dyslexia. There was a discussion about a sub-separate language-based classroom.
Yes.
Is that happening? Has that happened? Are there kids in it?
Dr. Girardi?
There is. So the program's been developed and began this year. And it's actually, right now, it's for either sub-separate or for pull-out services. So for kids who are identified but don't need a sub-separate, they can just go there for certain periods where they can get help. And there's been a, we've had a consultant actually reviewing a lot of students who are at risk to try and see which students would benefit from it. So, and I know some students have been referred to it for, even for like pull-out, just for a period or two at a time.
So it is actively happening right now?
Yes.
And is it across all grades, from fourth through eighth, or?
At the elementary school right now.
Okay, so just, what, fourth, fourth, fifth, and sixth? Is that where?
I'm sorry.
Four through six.
I'm sorry, it's four through six. It's here, it's four through six.
It's been a long wait, Bob.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jessica, follow up?
I just wanted to ask a quick question, a little bit more about the referral process for the program, because it is such a new program. And you just mentioned that we have a consultant that's identifying children for the program.
I'm, to be honest with you, I don't want to speak out of turn, that's Carol's area. So if, if that's something that the school committee would like to bring back and talk about, we can.
Yeah, would, do you want an update at the, at the next agenda on the 18th? Perfect.
Sure.
Then we'll make it happen. Yeah, I think it's a very reasonable fear. Dr. Girardi may not be as intimately familiar, let's get the people.
I didn't even know what grade level is, so.
Yeah, but.
It's been a long week. Mold has been my major topic.
So again, Colleen, thank you. So it sounds like our agenda for the 18th is filling up, so make sure you get a good night's sleep on the 17th, because it sounds like it's going to be a longer night. But, no, it's really good. There's a lot of good work to be done. And we're trying to be reflective and responsive. And I feel like there's a really good level of community-based dialogue that's going on right now. And it's, it's a good thing, because obviously, the people that are experiencing it, experience it in a different way than those of us that sit up here. So I'm really glad that this information's coming up and that we want to talk about it. And we want to see what we can do the best thing, how to do the best thing for our children, so. And our staff members and our administrators most of the time. Sorry, that was, that was a joke. I'm tired, too. Just kidding, Bob, I always want the best for you. So what else? Anything? Members' comments and questions?
I'll start, so that Erin can go home. So I just, I wanted to thank Erin for a couple of times, last week, I guess it was, it was brought to my attention that we should possibly go for a community preservation grant request for the bleachers. And so I reached out to Erin on Thursday, I think it was, and got the application and that. And with his help, we submitted the application for the grant request by Monday, this past Monday at four o'clock. So he had a lot of backup information, which will definitely help. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. So I'm not sure where it'll go. They did, you know, say that, that they'd, you know, probably have us come and, and speak. Not yesterday, but Erin volunteered to come with me, too.
Sounds great. So just for, like, my own knowledge, what category are we applying under? Is it recreation?
Recreation, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Perfect.
It seems to fit, seems to fit, you know, had all, answered all their questions about, you know, how it fit.
Okay. Another example of, like, the community-based partnerships, you know, we've done a lot of really good work with the CPC and.
And they did, one of the questions was, is there funding elsewhere? And Erin said that there's, there's a couple of different pockets that we might be able to, to help pay for it, pay for part of it, also.
I know it, for a long time, it's been on our capital needs list, you know, that we, we maintain in conjunction with the town and the other departments. So, you know, anything that we can do, obviously. You know, we had a, we had a very specific event that brought it to the forefront in the community again. So it seems like the time is right to try and make that happen. So thank you for the time and effort that both of you put into this process.
And then, just a couple of things, the, I was really excited to get an email from, or a tweet or some, I guess it was a tweet, from the high school, saying that they're going to have, celebrate Maynard High School Night on November 7th, for the lower, for the Fowler School students to, and their parents to go up to the high school to see what great things are going to be going on there. And of course, my next thought was, what are we doing? Are we doing something at the lower grades?
We are. And I don't, I know, we were planning on doing it with the open house, but we, I know that Dan and Jennifer had an idea of something that they thought was even better. And so they're working on it, and I, I, let me see if I can find the date. Let me look for it.
Okay.
I know, I know that they have something planned.
So why don't we let you have a moment to search, and we'll continue? What else is on your mind, Mary?
That was it. I was just going to, you know, mention the National Honor Society Night, which the guys did, so that's it.
Okay, Mara, anything?
I did have one other thing, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Mary.
The Asabet School Committee position opening, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, so as an extension of the offerings for Maynard High School students, we are in an agreement with the Asabet Valley Vocational Technical School. And as a result, we send one community member who sits on their school board. The person who's been filling that seat for a number of years recently announced that they are resigning from that post. So similar to when we had to fill Mary Merritt's seat a few months ago, there is an opening for a person to fill out the remainder of the term for this year on the Asabet Valley Board. That will be a joint appointment at a meeting on October the 16th, a joint meeting between our board and the Board of Selectmen. Interested candidates can send a letter of interest to myself and Chris De Silva, who's the Chair of the Select Committee. That information has been put out on the town website. If you follow the Maynard Public Schools Facebook page, we have been advertising that as soon as we got the green light that the resignation was official. The, the time period is, we're asking for the letters of interest to be submitted by October the 12th, which will give us a few days to review any interested candidates before the meeting on the 16th. And then the hope is, we will leave the selectmen's meeting on the 16th with a new person who'll be appointed to fulfill the remainder of the term until May. And then that person's seat will be up for general election as it is on the regular election cycle.
I got the date. October 17th, they're calling it a steam night, because they're going to be presenting a lot of the amazing opportunities that we have at Fowler in regards to steam.
Okay, so that's a Wednesday night?
Yeah.
That's the Fowler.
Steam night.
Information steam night.
And they're going to put that out soon, October 17th?
I know that Jennifer and Dan are working on it with the staff, so.
Perfect.
Great, thank you. Um, let's see. I just wanted to thank everybody that showed up to last night's parent forum. We got a lot of really great information, and I wanted to, and I wanted to thank Beth Lynn for taking great notes.
Yes.
It's kind of an obsession of mine.
Well, you volunteered, and we didn't even have to ask, and that was incredibly helpful.
I also, I was, since I wasn't at the last meeting, I did look at the minutes and noticed that one of the subjects that was brought up was the heat, hot days, especially over at Green Meadow.
Yeah.
And, and so I just wanted to kind of figure out if we were going to maybe talk about that on another later date, or if that's something that maybe policy needed to talk about, along with doing some, maybe doing like Blizzard packets or work packets that kids can take home for, for work.
Right.
I don't know if that's something we want to visit, so.
I, I think it's absolutely something that merits further discussion and interest. My sister-in-law teaches in New Hampshire on the seacoast, and they've been doing the Blizzard bags for a number of years. So I, I think both of those warrant it, and I would like to see the policy subcommittee maybe do a little bit of research and look at what some of the practices are, and come back with some recommendations that we can discuss as a board. Maybe bounce it off the members of the community and make it a collaborative decision. But yeah, I'm with you on that.
So if you don't mind explaining Blizzard bags, for people that don't know.
So, from what I understand, and I haven't really looked all that in-depth into it, but a Blizzard bag is where the teachers will put together a packet of work that the kids can take home, like, the day before, say we know that there's a storm coming, and that there's a possibility that school could be canceled, that that packet would go home with the kids so that they could do it at home. And so that would, that would help with keeping our, going with what everybody's supposed to be doing, so we're not losing time.